...location without providing aid. Twenty to thirty seconds later, a second car comes over and again runs over Mr. Price.
The first vehicle is described as a possible 1997-98 dark gray SUV with a four-to-five-inch lift kit. The second car is described as a compact passenger vehicle.
If that person knows anything out there regarding what happened that night, has heard anything, if they could please come forward. My family needs closure in this.
If you have any information, please call 1-800-222-TIPS or 1-800-222-8477. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Investigators have run out of leads and hope that a monetary reward will serve as an incentive for someone to come forward with information regarding this case. A longtime spiritual leader from South Los Angeles receives a posthumous honor from the city, and the celebration was one that also served as a walk down memory lane for many in the community. City workers mount a plaque onto a light post, letting motorists and pedestrians know that they have just entered Dr. William Matthew Brent Senior Square.
So many have contributed so greatly to our lives. For forty-four years, Doc and I were married, but when we married, he was already pastor here. He kidnapped me from Dallas.
Flanked by her family, the wife of the late Dr. Brent Senior thanked her husband's congregation for their love and support. Brent spent a large part of his adult life serving as a preacher until his retirement in 2006.
The legacy of Dr. Brent found a home right here on this corner at the Evening Star Missionary Baptist Church, where he served for some forty-one years as its senior pastor.
And it was at the intersection of 59th and Brentwood Streets in South Los Angeles, right outside the church he shepherded, that plaques bearing his name were erected by the city of Los Angeles.
He and my uncle Reverend Thomas were friends. So we take this moment to thank the city of Los Angeles for laying claim to its historic memory.
The plaque dedication ceremony was intended to celebrate the life and legacy of one special man.
It's good to be reminded of our history and those who helped make the history because times are changing.
But it also turned out to be a celebration of a special period in time for this tight-knit South Los Angeles community. Brent passed away this past October. L.L. Cool J, LeVar Burton, and Danny Glover. These individuals are being recognized this year by the city as part of the city's annual African-American Heritage Month celebration. Rich Samuels reports.
The mayor and city council recently kicked off this year's African-American Heritage Month with a celebration inside city council chambers and outside in city halls forecourt.
We're still at the crossroads of freedom and equality. So much has been achieved, so much has changed, so much has been realized, but so much is still left to be done.
This year's honorees included LeVar Burton, best known for his roles and roots in Star Trek: The Next Generation, and long associated with children's literacy as the host and executive producer of Reading Rainbow. Danny Glover, actor, producer, and humanitarian, has a long list of credits including Lethal Weapon and Dreamgirls, and is recognized for his wide-ranging community activism.
When we talk about art, as Ozzie Davis says, "We're gonna need artists to save us from machines." We need to cultivate that art right here in those places, in those communities, as we see in those communities. And here, an African-American Heritage Month is a perfect way to recommit ourselves to that venture.
L.L. Cool J is a Grammy Award winner, an actor, an entrepreneur, an author, and philanthropist.
Celebrating my heritage makes me eager and excited about the opportunity to celebrate your heritage. And that is, I think, something that will make the fabric of our country that much stronger yet.
The celebration continued in city halls forecourt and is only the beginning of a month-long celebration of art, culture, and community. I'm Rich Samuels for LA This Week.
The city's Department of Cultural Affairs is showcasing a full calendar of Heritage Month events at its neighborhood arts and cultural centers. The county's first female African-American lead prosecutor is also honored at city hall. The city becomes the first big city in the world to sync up all its traffic lights, and city leaders usher in the Year of the Snake. These stories and more in City Beat. Mayor Antonio Varegoza recently joined the LA Department of Transportation in flipping the switch on the final traffic intersection in the citywide signal synchronization program at the northwest corner of South Broadway and Martin Luther King Boulevard. This makes all of Los Angeles' 4,398 traffic signals part of the Automated Traffic Surveillance and Control, or ATSA, system. The completion of this program is expected to decrease average travel time for commuters throughout Los Angeles by a whole day a year, and improve air quality by reducing greenhouse gas emissions.
I'd like to call her prosecutor with a heart.
Los Angeles County District Attorney Jackie Lacy was honored at Los Angeles City Hall by Councilmember Bernard Parks and his fellow council members as part of Black History Month. Lacy was sworn in last December as the first African-American and first female Los Angeles County District Attorney.
I realize that while being elected made history, I intend to earn my legacy. And we have already launched our priorities.
Prior to being elected LA County Prosecutor, Lacy spent most of her professional life as a prosecutor, manager, and executive in the Los Angeles County District Attorney's office. The city's Department of Recreation and Parks, along with the Los Angeles Housing Department, has opened the ninth of fifty planned parks as part of the city's Fifty Parks Initiative, this one in South LA at 4,600 South Orchard Avenue. The Fifty Parks Initiative is a public-private partnership that will add over 170 acres of new open space to the city by transforming formerly blighted properties. Each park features decorative fencing and automatic time-lock gates that ensure that the parks close automatically after hours. Orchard Park also features some outdoor exercise equipment. Meanwhile, the city has also broken ground in the Harbor Gateway area on another Fifty Parks Initiative project. The future Harbor Gateway Pocket Park will be located at the corner of Torrance Boulevard and Denker Avenue. The Los Angeles City Council, as it does every year, celebrates the arrival of the new Lunar New Year. This year is the Year of the Snake. Councilmember Ed Reyes, who represents Chinatown, shares the legend behind the Chinese zodiac.
Buddha asked all the animals to meet with, to meet him on Chinese New Year. The twelve animals that came first each had a year named after them.
The 2013 Miss Chinatown and her court were also on hand for the celebration in council And the Chinese New Year celebration moved from city hall to the streets of Chinatown as families from all backgrounds helped mark the Year of the Snake. Rasha Goel takes us to the Golden Dragon Parade.
Happy New Year! Dragons, floats, and more. In commemorating this important holiday for Asian-Americans, the Chinese Chamber of Commerce of Los Angeles hosted the 114th Annual Golden Dragon Parade and Festival in the streets Joining the fun were councilmember Ed Reyes, who represents the Chinatown district, as well as this year's parade grand marshals, Mayor Antonio Varegoza, and LAPD Chief Charlie Beck.
Ellen, the merchants here, the community members here, thank you so much for keeping Chinatown so vibrant.
This celebration is the oldest and one of the most recognized New Year celebrations in the country. From a parade in the heart of LA's Chinatown to carnival rides and food trucks, there was a little something for people of all ages as they celebrated the Year of the Snake.
We're having a great day with our friends, and we got lots of Chinese chocolate money, and we got a little dragon, so it's a great day.
A little taste of a culture from across the world here in a city that embraces diversity. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Lunar New Year is the most celebrated holiday of the year for nearly 1.5 million people of Chinese, Korean, and Vietnamese descent in Southern California. It's a joint effort by the Dodgers' Dream Foundation, the LA 84 Foundation, and the city of LA. This program builds more parks where LA's kids can score home runs. Anna Marcos has more on the opening of the latest Dodgers' Dream Field.
Go Dodgers! A rallying cheer and another Dodgers' Dream Field goes up in LA. This one near Reseda's Rec Center marks the 25th Dream Field the Dodgers' Dream Foundation has scored in the last couple of years. The program builds baseball fields so kids in all of LA's neighborhoods can go up to bat.
My kids love it. My kids play baseball, so that, just to see them, you know, interact with the Dodger players, it's a great experience for them.
We can grow young Dodger fans, hope they grow into mature and then older Dodger fans, and keep the generations growing with Dodger baseball.
Out on the field, a little baseball 101 for the kids with both Dodger hopefuls and Dodger legends, such as Ramon Martinez, Al the Bull Ferrara, and Steve Yeager.
We're just teaching, trying to teach them the proper technique of just catching a ground ball.
There are fielding clinics, base running clinics, pitching clinics, and hitting clinics. This is equal opportunity baseball, no matter what your sex, age, size, or ability.
Baseball is, is our national pastime, and you guys are just now the next generation. You'll be able to learn this wonderful game.
This park is for you, kids. We built it for you. We want you to use it. The Dodgers want to see all you kids here. They want to see this park used every single day.
And with more Dream Fields on the way, expect more home runs, not just for the Dodgers, but for the kids, as more future baseball fans get the chance to play ball. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
And in this week's list of things to do, the annual Lantern Festival at the El Pueblo Historical Monument, getting creative at an open studio event, and free yoga at one local library. The Chinese American Museum will hold its annual Lantern Festival celebration on Saturday, March 2nd, from noon to 7:00 PM, at the Chinese American Museum located at 425 North Los Angeles Street, at the El Pueblo Historical Monument across from Union Station. A hugely popular holiday in the Chinese culture, Lantern Festival occurs annually on the 15th day of the first lunar month to mark the closing of Chinese New Year festivities. Each year, Lantern Festival spotlights a Chinese-American recreation of a traditional village street fair, featuring brilliant lantern displays, Chinese opera-style face painting, kite building, acrobatic and lion dance performances, and even a spirited glow-in-the-dark Silver Dragon stage performance. Go to camla.org for more details. And libraries aren't just for reading anymore. You can even get your exercise in. The Memorial Branch Library offers free basic Hatha yoga classes on many a Saturdays. The next one will be held on Saturday, March 2nd, from 12:15 to 1:30 PM. Bring a yoga mat or heavy towel and wear comfortable clothing. The Memorial Branch Library is located at 4625 West Olympic Boulevard. You can find this and other classes by going to lapl.org and clicking on the calendar section. Meet up with friends or bring your family to Moca Grand Avenue downtown on the first Sunday of every month for an open studio workshop. Explore works of art on view through conversation and activities inside the museum, and make your own work on the Sculpture Plaza. The Sunday studio event is appropriate for all ages and ability levels. The next one happens on Sunday, March 3rd, at 3:30 PM. Moca Grand Avenue is located at 250 South Grand Avenue downtown. The event is free and no reservations are required. Go to moca.org, click on the programs link for the drop-down menu, then select Sunday Studios. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Good morning. It is Friday, March 1st. I want to welcome everyone to your Los Angeles City Council meeting. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 AM. The public is welcome. It's good to see you all. If you want to speak on an item, you can fill out a card in the back, or if you just want to watch your government work, you just go right ahead. With that said, Mr. Clerk, I believe, emphasis on believe, we have a quorum.
Yes, sir, we do. Alarcon, Buscano, Englander, Gracetti, Weezer, Corret, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, Pereira, Shrozenfeld, Zion, Wesson, eleven members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Labange moves, Weezer seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Uh, Mr. Parks moves, Krikorian seconds. Let's run through the agenda.
Very good, sir. Item one is an item noticed for public hearing. We do have a card in on that matter.
Okay, so let's go to the next section.
Very good, sir. Items two through nine are items for which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for items eight and nine have been submitted and distributed for council's consideration.
All right. Members' specials, members' specials. I didn't hear you. Number eight held for Mr. Reyes. Seven for an amendment?
No, seventh forthwith after we vote on it.
Okay, okay, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, per Mr. Weezer, forthwith on item seven. Next, Mr. Clerk.
Items ten through thirteen are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, those items are now before us. Do we have any cards?
Yes, sir, we have cards on all.
Okay, so then we'll hold those items. That brings us where?
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations.
Okay. We have several today, and what I might do is, in between each presentation, I might call up a general public comment card, Mr. City Attorney, if that's okay? Oh, gotcha, okay. All right, so with that said, we start with, is it Mr. Reyes? Mr. Reyes, are you ready for your presentation? Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Ed Reyes has the floor.
Thanks so much for helping move this forward. Really appreciate it.
Very much appreciated.
Thanks so much for helping move this forward, really appreciate it. Thank you, Council President, colleagues, members of the council. Today's presentation, with members of the Wong family and the Chinatown community, celebrates the dedication of Judge Delbert E. Wong Square. Later this afternoon, we will be dedicating the intersection of North Hill Street and Orange Street to a man who helped transform Chinatown, Judge Delbert E. Wong. Judge Wong becomes the first Chinese-American to be recognized anywhere by the city of Los Angeles with an official landmark, street, or square. Through this square dedication, we celebrate a judge, a national leader, a family man, and a friend to many. A visionary passionate about transforming the Chinatown community with a focus on families and children. Judge Wong dedicated his entire life to public service. He was a champion for civil rights, equality, and integrity as an individual and judge. Delbert E. Wong was a man of firsts. The first Chinese-American graduate of Stanford Law School, first Asian-American to serve the California State Legislature as Deputy Legislative Counsel, the first Asian-American to be Deputy State Attorney General. And most notably, his appointment too as a judge for the Los Angeles County Municipal Court made him the first Chinese-American in the U.S. to serve as judge. He later advanced to State Superior Court, where he has served for over two decades. Before attending law school, he fought in World War I with the Army Air Corps. In his later years, he and his wife Dolores made significant contributions to legal, social, and cultural organizations such as the Asian Pacific American Legal Center, the Chinatown Service Center, the Chinese-American Museum, the Chinese-American Citizens Alliance, and Friends of the Chinatown Library. With me, I am joined by Mrs. Dolores Wong, by Mr. Kent Wong, who is no stranger to activism and social justice and the fight for social justice, Mr. Marshall Wong, and Mr. Dwayne Wong. So let's give them a big round of applause.
Give them a round of applause, because they definitely deserve it. Thank you for all that you do.
Mr. Kent Wong, I'd like to have you come to the podium.
Before Ken goes to the podium, I want Mr. Labange to say a few words.
The beauty of our day is when things happen that you don't know. Mr. Reyes, you've brought such a great family to the chambers. Judge Wong was my scout master, Troop 527. Dwayne Wong, right there, Dwayne, you were in our troop, and we were at Ivanhoe Elementary School. But then there's Dolores Wong, right there, and the judge, and Mrs. Wong would walk all over Silver Lake, and everybody knew them in the neighborhood, and they were dear friends of my parents, which were so special. So what a special day it's going to be on Hill Street. What a special day to recognize your father, who was so special and so historic. Mr. Krikorian and I were chatting about that briefly, and it was Governor Brown, I believe, who was the one who saw the light. So I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Reyes, and if I could find my way to Fourth and...
Orde.
Orde, Orde and Hill. What time?
In front of the library.
I know, but what time?
2 o'clock.
2 o'clock, do I need my library card?
If you bring it, we'll be very impressed.
God bless Judge Wong's memory, God bless Dolores Wong. Everybody in Silver Lake, on Silver Lake, West Silver Lake Drive misses you and loves you, and there is nobody like you, Dolores. Give Dolores a big hand, I love you. Thank you. Thank you.
On behalf of the family of Judge Delbert Wong, we are grateful for this honor from the Los Angeles City Council. My name is Kent Wong, Judge Wong's son. We feel especially blessed that our mother, Dolores, is able to join us here today at the young age of 91. My father always told us that the second-best decision he ever made was to go to law school. The best decision he made in life was to marry our mother. Dad was a decorated World War II veteran. He was the first Chinese-American graduate from Stanford Law School and to serve as California Deputy State Attorney General, and he was the first Chinese-American judge in the country. He proudly served on the Los Angeles Superior Court for 20 years. Dad was a dedicated public servant and a lifelong leader of not only the Chinese-American community, but of our society at large. It is fitting that the square being named in his memory is located adjacent to the Chinatown Library, a project that both my parents helped to found. Dad was a wonderful husband and a loving father of four. Three of his children are with us here today, Dwayne and his wife Joanne, Marshall, and I am accompanied by my wife Jay. Dad was also the proud grandfather of three grandsons. Our family hopes that this dedication will celebrate Delbert Wong's life of public service and inspire future leaders to contribute to our father's vision of a society committed to justice and equality. Thank you so much.
I'm a council president, I'd like to present this certificate of recognition in the honor of Judge Delbert E. Wong to Mrs. Wong and her sons.
She's a dear, let's give her a round of applause.
We also have the square, we'll give this to the family as well, so we reinforce the fact that it really exists out in the public, and they share this at home. Congratulations to the Wong family, and thank you, colleagues, for your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Okay, Mr. Weezer, if you could begin to make your way to the podium for our next presentation. And I'm sorry you had to serve in the same Boy Scout troop with Mr. Labange. It's a small world. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, Mr. President, it gives me great joy today to introduce and recognize Hispanas Organized for Political Equality, also known as HOPE, and we are here to announce their celebration of their 22nd anniversary of Latina History Day, which takes place on Friday, March 8th of this year. And as you can see, we've been joined by a number of the women from HOPE and some of the participants in their many programs. It's always a pleasure to have them here each and every year to continue to celebrate the work they do on their Latina History Day, but also the work they do throughout the year. And what better way to kick off and celebrate Women's History Month than by recognizing this important day and the important contributions the Latinas have made here in the city of Los Angeles and indeed throughout our country and the world? I want to thank Ellen Iris Torres, who's here, she's the Executive Director and CEO of HOPE. There she is. And also Norma Dominguez and Vanessa Pareda for the co-chairs of this year's Latina History Day Conference. Let's give them a big round of applause as well, thank you for the work you do. HOPE thrives because of diligent staff and its number of volunteers, alumni, and supporters, and for each of the events that they have, it's always great to see how many people are willing to give up their time to support our young Latinas, as HOPE is helping many of them. Founded in 1989, HOPE is an incredible organization dedicated to improving the education, political, and economic status of Latinas, and is committed to ensuring that more Latina women hold leadership positions in our private and public sectors. HOPE does this in several ways, through their Leadership Institute program, a statewide leadership program for professional Latinas who gain leadership and advocacy skills that help them create fundamental change in their communities. HOPE also worked with young Latinas in high schools through their Youth Leadership Through Literacy Program, also a statewide program that focuses on ensuring that young Latinas attain a college education. And today, we celebrate another great program, their Latina History Day Conference, which will take place in a week and is an all-day conference, and they celebrate not only the historic accomplishments of Latinas, but give young Latinas the skills they need to succeed. I'm proud to say that many of my close friends, as well as many other Latina leaders throughout California, are HOPE alumni, and my wife, Rashawe Reels, who's here, helped with this past December's gala, so thank you too for your work. And HOPE undoubtedly is preparing the future generations of Latinas who will lead our communities and our nation. And for this reason, it is my pleasure to recognize the Latina History Day Conference Co-Chairs for this year. I want to recognize Norma Dominguez and Vanessa Pareda, and if I could give them a resolution thanking them for their work on this year's conference. It's always a pleasure to have you here and to celebrate the accomplishments, the achievements, and all the work you do on behalf of the many Latinas who is a growing segment of a population, perhaps one of the fastest-growing segments of our population in the country. So congratulations to you too.
Thank you, Councilmember Jose Weezer, for your support throughout the years of HOPE and for recognizing that Latinas here in Los Angeles are an important part of the political and economic fabric of our great city. Thank you to Councilmember Joe Buscaino, who is demonstrating his support by sending Latinas from his district, my hometown, to attend Latina History Day. And a special thank you to the entire City Council, who for the past three years have been proclaiming Latina History Day, the 2nd Friday in March, as Latina History Day. The proclamation of Latina History Day during Women's History Month is appropriate and has memorialized the importance of Latinas here in the United States and in American society. Latinas are breaking glass ceilings and pioneering into areas that few women once ventured. Latinas are business owners, executives in our largest corporations, civil servants, and are pointed to many powerful and influential positions.
Good morning. I stand today in front of all of you as a HOPE graduate of a program that served over 400 women. This program has touched the lives of so many women and has empowered them, and it was through that program where I shared stories with my colleagues, with the women behind me, and learned about their grandmothers, their sisters, and their daughters, and how their lives have changed and truly made a difference, which is why this year's conference's theme is honoring the past, empowering the future. Because when we're here today with our grandparents, we know they have great stories, and if I had more time, I would share the stories of my grandmother and the burro that she once wrote, and how that continues to inspire me every day, and that women will only make change if we give them the tools that they need and we share these stories, stories that they're empowered in the future. So quickly, just in closing, HOPE has touched over 45,000 Latinas over the last 23 years, and we are very proud that Latina History Day celebrates contemporary Latinas who are building the foundation for future generations. Today, you all honor HOPE and all of Latinas who make the city great. Thank you.
Let's give them a round of applause, thank you, and congratulations. And hello to Mrs. Weezer.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. As you can see, it's always great to see an organization that is supporting young women to go out and explore the world beyond that immediate around them, and they not only expose them to the political processes, to the corporate life, to the private sector life, but also give them skills to be the leaders of tomorrow. It's a great organization, and I know many councilmembers here have often supported this organization, so thank you so much for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Labange, are you ready to go? So we will now defer to Mr. Tom Labange.
Los Angeles corporation. It's in the 4th District, but in every community, in every neighborhood, and also a very special organization that helps this region so well. If you talk about earthquakes, and I wonder if Mitch Englander could join me up here. We know that in '06, there was San Francisco, and '33 in Tehachapi, and '51, 33 in Long Beach, '51 in Tehachapi, '71 in Silmar, '87 in Whittier, '94 in Northridge. We're waiting for another one. Another earthquake will come, we have to be prepared. But this is a personal earthquake that I have a little analogy to, and that is if you have a heart attack. That could happen anytime, any, any, anytime. And with us today is a distinguished group of people from the Farmers Insurance and the American Red Cross, because they're going to have a very special event right out here on the Grand Park, where they're going to have a flash mob. I'm trying to be cool, is that right, Mr. Clerk? Flash mob, did I do that? For CPR, which is so important, which is so important. That's going to happen today on the first day of March at 11 o'clock through 2, and we're going to teach citizens about CPR. June Andrade, who was a fire department employee, did such a great job in pushing this for citizens when she worked for the fire department. Now we have the great Farmers Insurance, and the thing I love about Farmers Insurance, Mr. Wesson, which is right by both our districts, is their employees walk at their breaks down Olympic and Rimpa, over through 6th and Rimpa, they walk the neighborhoods for good health, which is so important. But their efforts today, which they're going to do on the citizen CPR mob, is a way to get people involved, because it is going to be a key. There's not enough firefighters, there's not enough police officers when the big one hits. But then, if you have an incident, a personal incident, there may not be a firefighter or a police officer nearby, so citizen empowerment is so key for CPR. So at this time, I'd like to call on Todd Brooks, who's the head of distribution for Farmers Insurance, very special team leader, if I could call that. So from Farmers Insurance, bum, 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 please welcome Todd Brooks.
You got it perfect. Thank you very much, Councilman Labange.
And, Mr. Brooks, before you start, Mr. Labange, I want to thank you for scaring the heck out of all of us, and now we will definitely be aware. With that said, Mr. Brooks, it was a pleasure to meet you earlier. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you very much, and my heart's still pumping right now, so I think I'm okay. But first of all, good morning, everyone, and my name is Todd Brooks, and on behalf of Farmers Insurance, who will celebrate our 85th year in business here in the greater Los Angeles, one of, you know, our hometown, and we appreciate being here this month. It is truly an honor to be part of this program today and be a partner of the American Red Cross. Farmers have been working with the American Red Cross for many years. It's not surprising, considering we're both in a disaster response business, but it's especially rewarding when we can formalize our partnership through programs such as disaster preparedness and a CPR event that we have today. So with us, I'd like to turn it over to Mr., our CEO of the American Red Cross, Los Angeles Region, Mr. Paul Schultz.
All right, Paul.
Give me your jacket, Paul. Thank you so much, okay. Well, if we're going to do the flash mob, we want everyone prepared. We would love to see the council and anyone in chambers here come out and join us at noon. It's a great time to learn hands-only CPR. A number of the council members and myself are at that age where we might want a helping hand around who actually knows some of the lifesaving skills of CPR. Council President Wesson, council members, thank you so much for supporting the Red Cross. These are lifesaving skills that everyone should have, and how appropriate in March, Red Cross Month, to be doing this effort. So thank you so much for your support, and Farmers, thank you so much for your support.
Oh, thank you very much, Todd, thank you for your words, and Paul, thank you for your words. And the American Red Cross, when there's a disaster, even a small disaster of displacement of a housing in a fire overnight, you guys are out there, 24 hours a day, somewhere in the city and county of Los Angeles, the Red Cross is there, and today, we're all going to be on Grand Park. I want to have Mr. Mitch Englander, Mr. readiness.
I want to have Mr. Mitch Englander, Mr. Readiness, wrap up here.
Absolutely. And actually, I just joined the Red Cross yesterday and gave blood. You can do that every 56 days. Right now, we're doing the Battle of the Badges, which is all the law enforcement agencies from throughout the region to see which, who's going to give more blood, police officers or firefighters. Last year, LAPD won, came in first place, and so we'll see what happens this year. But with that, Red Cross is also about to launch an app. So there's an app for that. So if I could plug that for a second. It's going to be the first time in Red Cross history where they actually won't be collecting blood for four days while they take the system down. And with that, when they bring it back up, there's going to be an app that I encourage all of you to download, and it's going to give you all kinds of vital information on not only where you can donate blood, how you can get involved, CPR instructions, information in the event of disaster, but it's going to be a regional approach. It's the first app of its kind in the nation, and so I encourage everybody to download that app and get involved. And then, Farmers, I want to say something about them too, not just Farmers Field, but Farmers Insurance and what they've been doing out here for the city of Los Angeles. When, you know, my district, as we all know, is the epicenter of disaster, whether it's annual fires or earthquakes, the train accidents that we've seen. But Farmers came out, and they've got this mobile van, and the van comes out on-site at reunification centers. And with that, when there's a major emergency or disaster, in this case, when we had the fires, they can automatically bring those Farmers Insurance customers into their mobile work lab and find them relocation and housing and assistance and all kinds of programs and opportunities. And so that's just one more place they're cutting-edge, working in the city of Los Angeles to improve services. So I am proud to join with Mr. Labange and also with the CPR. One more note on that. If you're CPR certified, it changes constantly. Every two years, when it expires, there's something new. Now, they're saying, you don't even have to, if you don't know CPR, just the chest compressions will save a life. You don't have to actually administer the breathing methods. And so we encourage everybody to come out on the lawn today for the flash mob and to get involved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Readiness.
And the bus, the bus that we talked about is going to be over at the park, so you can take a look at that as well.
Okay, let's give them another round of applause.
Big hand for the American Red Cross Farmers Insurance. Come out today.[746.61][746.61][applause] Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Labange, it's my understanding you have another one as well? Again, congratulations, and it was a pleasure, pleasure meeting you all. Mr. Labange has one more.
All right here, and this is on behalf of Mr. Zion. We have some great students here from the AFS-sponsored program.
Why don't you bring them up behind you?
We're going to come on up right now. Give them a big hand.
So we can take a good look at them.
They're students from around the world. We have Germany, Spain, Austria, Italy, Chile, Denmark, Brazil, Japan, Hong Kong, Saudi Arabia, Pakistan, all over the world, they are here. The American Field Service is a worldwide nonprofit organization that is dedicated to building a more just and peaceful world through international exchange and intercultural learning. AFS was founded as a volunteer corps during World War I and evolved to a student exchange program after the conclusion of that war. Since that time, well over 350,000 people, Sergeant, have joined this. 350,000 dedicated students have participated in this program worldwide. Educating students internationally is an important way to share values and create goodwill and work towards peace globally. And I look at all the deputies who are standing here for the offices of the council. You got to get involved and help and learn. But with us today, we have the special coordinator, who's their leader in Los Angeles here, as we visit Los Angeles here. And I want to pronounce your first name correctly, DeBora, and the last name? I'm Tom Labange. Deborah Mahora from South Africa. Give her a big hand.[865.51][865.51][applause]
Thank you, the City Council. My name is Deborah Mahova from South Africa, South Africa, nine province, that is the Limpopo Province. It's an honor and privilege to be in this place. Thank you.
I think we're going to vote for Deborah. She gave the shortest speech, Deborah.
The honor is ours.
Okay, I have certificates for everybody, but I want the young people, as we cascade out of the chambers, to say your name and the country you're from.
My name is Louise, and I'm from Brazil.
All right.
Nice to meet you.
Good job. Come on in.
My name is Alessa Ruschewein. I'm from Germany. Thank you.
My name is Francesca Silipe, and I'm from Italy.
My name is Saoud. I'm from Sarawebia.
My name is Laura, and I'm from Denmark.
My name is Ivan. I'm from Chile.
Chile, all right.
My name is, my name is Lihoe from Japan.
All right. Arigato.
My name is Clara, and I'm from Austria.
My name is Rocco, and I'm from Hong Kong.
Hong Kong, good job.
And Alvaro from Spain.
Very good. And another one of their coordinators?
Hi, I'm Karen Cross. I'm the Activity Director and Fund Meister for AFS here in Los Angeles, and I want to say thank you for hosting us every year. Councilman Zion has been doing this for a number of years, and we're so grateful. I'd also like to announce that Eric Garcetti's sister will be hosting next year, so we're very excited about that. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. President. Let's give all these young students a big hand and thank Mr. Zion for his great leadership there. Thank you.
Mr. Englander.
I'm honored today to be here and bring to council chambers the Minister from Aruba of Integration Infrastructure, the Environment, Mr., Minister Ozlin Zevinger. His wife Claudia was going to join us today, but since she's in Los Angeles, she went out shopping instead. I thought I would mention that, but I'm also joined by Tigam, our co-founder, CEO, Alvaro Villa, and the co-founder and president Brad Reed. Tigam is a street car, Mr. Huizar, that I want to get you invested in and involved in. I think we might need one downtown pretty soon. They're completely designed and manufactured from scratch and by hand, and the craftsmanship is spectacular in Chatsworth here in Los Angeles. They're pollution-free, custom state-of-the-art street cars meant for inner-city transportation, and they're powered by a combination of lithium batteries, regenerative braking, and hydrogen fuel cells, generating zero pollutants. We struck this deal with Tigam and Aruba, and I also want to thank the Prime Minister, Mike Iman, for putting the deal together. The minister will be accepting the delivery of Aruba's second Tigam street car and announce the order for two additional cars to be delivered in 2013. The capital city has implemented Tigam street cars for an inner-city trolley system that is completely green, operating since December of 2012. The Caribbean island nation of Aruba has partnered with the Carbon War Room, a global initiative from Virgin founder Sir Richard Bronson and a group of entrepreneurs to become the first country in the world with 100% renewable energy economy. Aruba is a major tourist destination in the Caribbean and has one of the highest standards of living in the Caribbean area. With that, I would like to welcome and give the opportunity for the minister to share a few words as well. Thank you very much.
Welcome, sir. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. A member of the council. It's an honor for us to be here, and I would like to thank Mr. Engler and Tich for having us here today. Today is a special day for us from Aruba. We came to Los Angeles to receive the second trolley and to purchase two new ones. Aruba has signed in Rio plus 20 to be in the year 2020 to be 100% sustainable. So our Prime Minister, Mike Iman, signed with United Nations and Sir Richard Bronson, with the Carbon War Room, with the American, New American Foundation, and sure with LA to be the greenest country in the nation and in the Caribbean. So for us, it's an honor to be here, to sign for the two new trolleys that we're going to purchase, and we invite all of you to be in Aruba, spend some time with your family in Aruba, see what we are doing, because that will be a new standard for the Caribbean and for the world, that we as a small country will be the first 100% sustainable country. So we'd like to thank you to be here for receiving us and looking forward to see you in Aruba. Thank you very much, and have a nice day.
Thank you, and good luck to you, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And I'd also like to give Tigam an opportunity to say a few words as well. Please, thank you, Mr. Reed.
Mitchell?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mitch Englander. Thank you, Councilman Wesson. Tigam is deeply honored to have the government of Aruba as our most valuable client. The relationship is very valuable to us for several reasons. First of all, we have the opportunity to be involved in the further beautification of their already beautiful and happy island. Secondly, this very visible project gives Tigam the opportunity to showcase our cutting-edge technology before the entire world. So we would like to thank Minister Zevinger, Prime Minister Iman, and the people of Aruba for including us in the ambitious and far-sighted project for the beautification of historic downtown Aranystad with the downtown Aranystad Street Car System. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's give them a round of applause.[1268.33][1268.33][applause] Thank you, Mitchell. Okay, we will go, Mr. Clerk. I'm going to start off with general public comment. We'll see if we can get through that right quick. So with that said, if we could get Mr. John Walsh, HollywoodHighland.org, Antonio Ramirez, and Sean Murphy, you'd be the third person. So Mr. John Walsh, HollywoodHighland.org. Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh. I'd like Mr. Reyes to realize, he paid for an ad in the LA Times. Ed Reyes supports Jose Guardia. I'm a subscriber. You got ripped off. I live in Hollywood. They're sending these papers to the wrong spot. Okay, now, racist. There is no more racist newspaper in this city than the LA Weekly. I want to point out the racist caricature that these scumbags at the LA Weekly, in particular Jill Stewart, Jill, they have a racist caricature in this of Mr. Our President up here. You've seen that garbage. You've seen this garbage, and they don't even, I don't have to tell the black people, they don't even drop off in your neighborhood. Remember, the biggest racists are not Orville Fobbis, they're politically correct liberals. Hallel Iron racist scumbag. Okay, now I'm going to get tough. Kate Del Castillo, you remember that kid up here? If you want to see Kate Del Castillo in a lesbian love scene, she's the, I told you last October, she's the mayor's girlfriend, just go to the front page online and/or go to HollywoodHighlands.org, and you will see his new girlfriend. You heard about it here four or five months ago. No unprop A, the commercials don't even say it's a tax. And Jill Stewart, as I said, she is at the LA Press Cub, the president once of the LA Press Cub. LA Press Cub racist scumbags who attack, if you don't like her, tell him to his face the way I do, not make ugly pictures of black men. Ugly pictures, remember, they're all racists. And I'd like to say that Garcetti's not here, and Garcetti is not going to win this election. HollywoodHighlands.org, go to Joseph Maylander, go to Ron K. La, go to Mayor Sam. Scumbags. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh, for that. Antonio Ramirez, followed by Sean Murphy.
Good morning. We have an epidemic of gangbangers and criminal illegal aliens. Let's begin by saying there are over 11 million gangbangers and criminal illegal aliens in America. Compound the crimes and diseases to 22 million. We have a national travesty. And I, if I were a mayor, I would start sanctioning and arresting all the slum lords like Francis G. Smith at 245 South Lucas Avenue. She owns a property at 245 South Lucas Avenue, Los Angeles, California, 90026. And she has hired criminal illegal aliens who are criminally entering apartments that don't belong to them. They are Carmen Santiago and Roberto. The tenants who are also conspiring with gangbangers in criminally entering the apartments and vandalizing, burglarizing, taking ID thefts and all that stuff is Apartment 107, Apartment 109, Apartment 211, Apartment 218, that's Vicki, and Apartment 202, Vicki Cooper, Apartment 414, Alicia Limas, and Apartment Unknown with a license plate number of four, B as in boy, Y as in yellow, H as in hairy, 581, and Apartment 311. We also have the gang-banging territories of 1401 through 1407, Third Street, Los Angeles, California, 90026. The next apartment gang-infested is 265 South Lucas Avenue, LA, California, 90026. Next is 275 South Lucas Avenue, Los Angeles, California, 90026. The next one is 1345 Emerald Drive, Los Angeles, California, 90026. And the next is 119 through 233 South Lucas Avenue, LA, California. So Rampart Police Department, you suck. We hope to shut you down, and you really have violated every civil rights and committed obstruction.
Thank you. Thank you. Sean, followed by Mr. Dude, followed by, okay, give me a second. It's an Ann Walnam, maybe? Okay, so Sean, good to see you.
Good to see you too. I never come down here on a Friday, but my bosses had to go to a funeral, it's one of those things. Come down to CBS Studios tonight for the Mira Orles debate. This is the last one until Tuesday. I hope people come, I hope we get a good crowd down there. I hope they, people listen to what they have to say. I'm supporting Wendy Groo. People don't like it, too bad. Christie Clark for City Council 7, Mr. Ferro for City Council 13, Anna Copros, Anna for CD9, Joe Buscaino for CD15, reelect him.[1607.83] Anna for CD9, Joe Buscaino for CD15, reelect him. That's about it, thank you.
Thank you, Sean, it's always a pleasure. Mr. Dude.
I was just informed that you cannot use signs around here. I'm just telling people I look very mysterious, and I'm running for District 11. If I get elected, I will be the biggest monkey wrench in your system.
No signs.
That's not a good sign, that's a photograph. Okay? Anyway, the Weekly here, I don't know, some newspaper is telling the truth about the candidates for mayor. Look, in 2007, they were really friends, they were singing kumbaya when they were voting for salaries increases. Now they're all enemies, saying you are the crook, you broke the city, you, who are they? Garcetti, Perry, and Cindy Grul. That sounds nasty, Cindy Grul. They all sound nasty, and they're all pointing the finger at each other. No, you're the crook. No, no, you're the crook. They're finally telling the truth. They are all crooks. If you vote for me, you will not vote for a crook, you will just vote for a guy with crooked eyes. Okay? Anyway, I am for housing for everyone. We do not want your pigeon halls. You keep building more and more pigeon halls where people can be slaves to your system. We need to redo this system so people live freely, they can produce their own food, they don't need to go to Ralph's all the time, blah, blah, blah. We need to rearrange this stupid society so people are comfortable, not always uncomfortable because the LAPD is coming.
Thank you, Mr. Dude. Ann Walnam, I believe it is, followed by Robert Brody, followed by George. Sergeants, you're gonna go help George? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, I'm Ann Walnam. I live at 755 Crane Boulevard. My LA Times this morning did have the same thing that Mr. Walsh referred to, I made it into a button. I also have a button regarding Southwest Museum, and that's the purpose of my being here. I am the co-founder of Friends of Southwest Museum Coalition. It is fitting that today is a day of recognition of the importance of history. I wish to call your attention to the historic Southwest Museum, Los Angeles's first museum, founded in 1907. At issue is the preservation of the museum as an institution in its Charles Lummis-chosen spot and building. Two weeks ago, our neighborhood had a mayoral forum. All of the candidates pledged to protect Southwest Museum. Wendy Grul was not able to be at that forum. I talked to her at an Eagle Rock Forum a few days later. She also pledged yes on the preservation of Southwest Museum. So my purpose here today is, I do know that some issues regarding Southwest Museum preservation will be coming before you in the next few months. Will you also vote yes? Thank you.
Thank you. Where's Mr. Brody? Okay, George, I'll let George go first. Mr. Brody, stay where you are. Go on, George.
Very good. My name is George from Mac Foundation, nonprofit organization. Lot of councilmen know me. I am here 47 years, this building, from 1966, I worked volunteer. I give food to low-income people from Montebello, all Los Angeles area. Week, one time, 2,000 hungry people, I give food free. Now I am in a little bit bad shape. All my money, all my, I am rubbish man, I make a lot of money, I give all the poor people. Now I work for Section 8. I gonna give Section 8, heavy low-income people, I gonna full up food, clothes, furniture, everything. I hired people, already 150 people, now that people too I gonna hire. I hired another people, another, I gonna open up already five business, new 100 people gonna work. Why you not help councilman me? I wanna know. That's it. I got another thing. City Hall, Mayor, Antonio Villagioza, lot of councilmen, help me. He give us office, two floor, but belong to somebody, city pay $10,000 every month. Already one year and a half, talk, me can't pay anymore. I am out. I need a little room on the freeway--
Thank you, George.
101 freeway.
Thank you, George, you ran out of time, but thank you for all of your service. Okay, Mr. Brody.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here in support of the Southwest Museum, and 10 years ago, on February 14th, 2003, the City Council adopted this resolution, and I'd just like to read the last two paragraphs of it. Whereas the surrounding community would like written assurance in the final contract between the Southwest Museum and Autry Museum of Western Heritage, that this partnership will maintain the operation of the museum as an active institution, and there will be no delineation from its original intent. This would include continued operation as a museum showcasing Native American culture. Now therefore be resolved with the concurrence of the mayor, that by adoption of this resolution, the Los Angeles City Council hereby supports the community's position that there be appropriate restoration and preservation of the buildings at the Southwest Museum, and that publicity, programming, and community outreach be supported to the fullest extent possible to attain optimum use of the museum at its present location. I ask all of the council members to please support Ed Reyes, CD1, in its push to reverse the possible and impending closure of our first museum in the city.
Okay. Thank you very much. I believe we can go to the next item?
Mr. President, that brings us to item number one called Special for Cards.
John Walsh, on item number one, followed by Antonio Ramirez, and then Sean.
John Walsh blogging at, as he said, Hollywood, somebody said HollywoodHighlands.org, and chairman of the Anybody But Garcetti Committee. This is Concerns Confirmation of Leans for Nuisance Abatement. I think you're doing an excellent job. For extension of my remarks, just go to Joseph Maylander or to the front page online. Here's the LA Weekly. Thank you.
She passes. Sean?
Yes, I support this item, thank you.
Okay. And our last speaker, Dollhouse Dude. On item number one, sir.
Yes, George gave me, George gave me a map here that he wants--
Sir, on item number one, please.
Oh, on one?
Yes.
Okay, George told me to show you this. Anyway, yeah, all these, all these ways that the city and the county and the state, all those, all those ways that they have to penalize people all the time is the wrong way to do business. You have to reward people, not penalize them. See? Lean, the city is gonna take over your life, every time. The city does not have the right to take over people's lives. We elected you to help us. We did not elect you to punish us. It makes no sense for City Council and all the State Council and the federal government to be penalizing people for being alive, just because they want to create ways to get revenue. It makes no sense. We need a society where everybody has a home and nobody gets penalized for living in a house.
Thank you.
Can we stop being stupid?
Okay. That concludes public comments. Seeing no one on the row, on the queue here, let's open the row, close the row, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That takes the item number 10, Mr. Clerk.
That brings us to item number 10 called Special for Cards.
John Walsh, on item number 10, and Dollhouse Dude.
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org, and for identification purposes only, no on Prop A Committee. This concern, this concerns Public Safety Committee and the approval of the Narcotics Laboratory Trust. I hope none of this money, it's $700,000. I'm asking for an audit from Ms. Wendy Grul, she talks about audits, but she doesn't walk or talk. I'm not against this in principle, we're not against it, as long as the money actually go, shouldn't be wasted on pot or anything like that. Not that I've had pot this century, the last time I had pot, I think Nixon was president. But I'm very worried about this $200,000 for travel. Now, just do your job, the cops should do their job in the laboratory. So we are officially asking Wendy Grul for an audit, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. Dollhouse Dude?
The Catholics are coming, the Catholics are coming. You have formed a conglomerate, not just a corporation, you have the police as one corporation, City Hall as another corporation, and the legal system, the judges and all that as another corporation. You have formed a conglomerate--
He is not talking about this.
--to attack people. I'm talking about public safety. You are the ones that are causing unsafe conditions on people. You're driving them all homeless.
Sir, this is about the trust fund expenditure with the Los Angeles Police Department, trust fund expenditure, the Los Angeles Police Department.
Want to spend more money on your conglomerate. That's what I'm saying. You want to take more taxes and spend on building your conglomerate.
Mr. Attorney?
His comments are irrelevant to this item and tend to be disruptive to the meeting.
Okay, that concludes public comments. Seeing no one on the queue, let's open the row, close the row, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Mr. Clerk, let's jump to item number 12.
Item number 12 called Special for Cards.
Okay. We have John Walsh on this item, Antonio Ramirez, Sean, and Dollhouse Dude.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, see the mayor as Pope. Here we have the Project Safe Neighborhoods Program, City Attorney's Program. Although we do support Zion, I mean, we support Carmen Trutanich for City Attorney, we're asking for an audit. All that, I understand she hardly works at all, Wendy, now. She spends, instead of doing audits, she spends all her time talking about audits for 10 or 15 years, for four or five years.
He is not discussing this item, Mr. President.
An official request for an audit of the Project Safe Neighborhoods Program of the City Attorney. I'm sure you don't want it, you work for the City Attorney. $1,800 established? No. We're asking for it, and we're asking for it officially, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, next speaker, Antonio Ramirez.
Hello. We are in a bit of a pickle, if I may say so. The City Attorney's Office and the council members, absent two council members, and the crummy mayor have egregiously violated and contributed to the loss of quality of life for us Los Angelinos. In a sense, they have munched us like a sandwich between two loaves, munched us. They have suffocated us and they have--
Mr. President, she still has not addressed this item.
Please focus on the item on the agenda.
The item on the agenda says Project Safe Neighborhoods, and we have no safe neighborhoods in the city of Los Angeles, thanks to the council members and the city attorneys and Rampart Police Department. Now, when you three folks or groups get together and actually sit down and do your damn jobs, then maybe, City Attorney, we can have, you know, a safe living arrangements. We don't have to carry our bags and our purses and everything around with us because the locks that you are recommending don't work. The gangbangers are committing home invasion robberies, they're committing ID theft, and they are committing homicides, never mind an array of other crimes. What are you doing? You can't get a restraining order because it's past 30 days.
Ma'am, you don't need to scream, please bring your voice down to the quorum of this council. Thank you.
She is not discussing this item.
Thank you very much. You are now disrupting the meeting. You're not disrupting the meeting.
Yes, safe neighborhoods I am for, thank you. Wendy Grul for mayor.
Dollhouse Dude, you have one minute.
I love that lady, Antonia, she called me, I went back and gave me a pen.
He is not discussing this item.
Well, I'm just telling you what happened. Anyway, she talked about the same thing I was telling you, it's like a conglomerate, and that leaves us very unsafe. The ones that we have to watch out for--
We are discussing grant funding for the City Attorney's Program. Please stay focused on that item.
We do not have safe neighborhoods because you can throw anybody out on the streets. You have neighborhoods full of homeless people, ready to kick you for a dollar. That's what we have. We have a society full of homeless people. It is not a safe society, and you are creating it with all your policies. You are a conglomerate against the people.
Okay. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's open the row, close the row, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay. Counselor Buscaino, are you ready with your presentation? Are you ready? Okay. We now have Councilmember Joe Buscaino from the great Council District 15.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hey, guys. Don't cover my face. Don't cover my face. Raise it high, oh, you want to raise it high, there you go. Get over here, Donna. Come around, come around, Vipah and Rosalie, you gonna speak? What a very important and special presentation, colleagues. I have before you members of the St. Joseph Society from Mary Star of the Sea Parish, one of the largest parishes in the LA Archdiocese, and this really hits home for me, to be here to present before you a group of dedicated individuals who taught me early on the importance of faith and family, of giving back and helping the poor in our community. It's actually started from this society at Mary Star of the Sea Church. Today, it gives me great pleasure to have before you in these chambers, members of the St. Joseph Society. We're here to celebrate their 40th anniversary of the St. Joseph's Table Society. The Feast of St. Joseph is March 19th, and Mary Star Celebration will take place this year on Sunday, March 17th. In addition, you have a number of other St. Joseph's Table presentations across the city, specifically the Casa Italiana in your district, Mr. Reyes, on Broadway, as well as the Watts Towers. This ancient tradition dates back to the Middle Ages when Western Sicily experienced many years of drought. Crops and livestock were destroyed and many people died of starvation. The starving poor prayed to St. Joseph, hoping that he'd intercede on their behalf and send rain. Well, you know what? It did rain. The people pledged they would honor St. Joseph and provide food for the poor of all generations to come. As the story goes, St. Joseph answered their prayers, and the grateful people of Sicily honored their commitment through this now annual tradition of food and family and helping poor people across the world. The San Pedro version of this tradition began with a Sicilian woman named Josina Dukey. It was her dream to start organizing the St. Joseph's Table Society. After securing permission from the church, a founding committee was formed. The committee was comprised of Josina Dukey, my great aunt Giuseppe LaFatta, Paulina Manzella, my grandmother Rosaria Lograndi, Nunzia D'Orio, and Anna Anania. The committee members began soliciting donations and preparing blue garments, scarves, emblems, and banners, as the one that you see holding by my Uncle Joe, banners in preparation of the first celebration. The first celebration was held on March 1973, following the procession, a traditional meal of pasta, fajole, calamari salad, and bread was served. They called it the Poor Man's Meal. In the years that followed, representations of the Holy Family was added to the procession in addition to the statue of St. Joseph. During the procession, the color guard, the Knights of Columbus escorts the priests, the Holy Family, Mary Star Parish groups, and all other attendees, while the statue of St. Joseph is carried in the procession with the chants, of course, of Viva San Giuseppe. And colleagues-- this great cultural experience in San Pedro. Over the years, a new generation, the children of the founders that you see before you of the San Pedro Celebration, have taken over preparation of this annual event. The founders are still on hand to assist in their legacy. I'd like to take a moment to recognize an individual that has been instrumental in leading this tradition. Josephine Nacetta, to my left, is one of the lead organizers of the festivities, and her commitment goes beyond, above and beyond year after year for this annual celebration. And I want to not only thank you, Vipa, but also all the individuals here. Many are my aunts and uncles, my godmother, my godparents are also here joining us. And today, just to let you know, the proceeds from the feast benefits the Mary Star of the Sea Christian Care. It's a great organization that, again, provides meals on a daily basis to the poor in the Harbor Area community, also provide clothing as well. My Aunt Pina is there every single day, making meals for those who need it. I'd also like to thank Mary Star of the Sea Parish for their tireless efforts in assisting these community leaders in making this tradition a great success. And on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I want to recognize the Saint Joseph Society on their 40th year anniversary. Let's give them a warm Los Angeles welcome.
And Mr. Buscayino, if I could call on Mr. Reyes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, it is an honor to listen, not to the great history of an amazing community, but to hear and feel the passion of a council member who does represent, and is a living example of how deep roots can be in a community. But it's not only how the roots are strengthened, but how it gives, how it gives of itself through food, through meals, recognizing the tribulations of those who do not have. And the immigrant experience is so special, and to live it, and to give back, and to be able to breathe in that sense of accomplishment, and then to share it, is a great example of what the city is about. And thank you, Councilor Buscayino, for sharing this with us. When you said Mary Star of the Sea and the parish, I was thinking about cathedral games and Santa Fe League back in the 70s. And you see how you have these great, great stories that make up this beautiful city because of great folks like yourselves. So, thank you for your golden hearts. Thank you for sharing this with us. It lifts the soul to celebrate humanity and giving the way you have. Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. You're absolutely right. You know, it really, I remember as a kid growing up, I would go, wake up in the morning, the Saturday before the feast, going to Joseph's Bakery and baking bread with my dad, and it was really, it's a foundation. As a son of immigrants and the many of the Italian immigrants you see before you, it was their commitment, and I was, I'm so blessed and to really take part of their traditions and to do so now, it's pretty surreal that we're celebrating them, their 40th year here in these beautiful city council chambers.
Well, you're a great spokesperson for the group, Joey B. And now, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much, and this is certainly a real heartfelt presentation, Joe, and thank you for presenting this, and congratulations to all of you for your 40 years of service. And I know it means a lot for you to give back and sometimes ensure that those who do not have have because of the community and volunteerism such as people like yourselves. The only thing is that every time I hear Mary Star of the Sea, my high school, Silesian High School, played against Mary Star High School, and it was a goal of mine to beat them in baseball. We never did. So, I always, although I love the work you do and the church, but the high school, my high school could never beat them in baseball. So, one day, we'll see if that ever comes true. Congratulations to you all.
Thanks, Mr. Weezer.
Again, congratulations.
Thank you so much. So, with that, if I may, Mr. President, another just pillar in this organization, Rosalie Orlando, who's also a high school teacher, she's going to say a few words, if we can, on behalf of the group.
Of course.
Thank you.
Of course. Please come to the microphone, and welcome.
Thank you very much. On behalf of everyone at the Saint Joseph's Table Society, we are completely overwhelmed and honored that the city of Los Angeles is recognizing the 40 years of work of the six founders, which one was including my mother, Ms. Rosaria Legrandi, Joe Buscayino's grandmother, and Mrs. Josina Duki, Mrs. LaFatta, who are deceased, and Mrs. Ananilla, and Nunzia D'Orio, who unfortunately were not able to make it here today. We worked very hard to keep the culture, the tradition, and the work of Saint Joseph to our community. Feeding the poor is something that the six members envisioned 40 years ago, and probably no way in their dreams would they have believed that we would have carried on this tradition for such a long time. I, God bless my mother and the other five women for having that vision, and thank you the city of Los Angeles for recognizing our work. Thank you.
Now, God bless you all. God bless you all.
We're going to go in the back now, we'll take a picture there.
Thank you again.
Okay. It was a great one, Joe. This was a great one. Okay. Mr. Clerk, I'm going to move to item eight, and Mr. Reyes, we have cards on eight. Okay, so now we're on item eight, and it's my understanding that Mr. Reyes is amending the motion, so we do have to reopen the hearing on this. So, Antonio Ramirez and Mr. Dude. Oh, I'm informed, Mr. Dude, that you're out of time on the individual items.
Again, in reference to these projects, Affordable Housing Trust Fund, I would adamantly oppose any funding to the city of Los Angeles, because the city of Los Angeles has fraudently accepted monies and has not used it in compliance with helping low-income individuals, that being, first and foremost, military veterans, whether they are uniformed or ununiformed, active or inactive.
Ms. Ramirez, she is not discussing this item. This is better reserved for general public comment.
Okay. Follow the City Attorney's Guidelines, please.
We are talking about Affordable Housing Trust Fund for the Blossom Plaza, Linda Vista Apartments Phase Two, and the Navy Village Projects and various actions related to that. So, again, City Attorney, don't try to give me a headache here, but do your job, and I'll do mine.
No, he is, he is doing his job.
No, he's not.
His job is, his job is to keep you on, his job is to keep you on the subject. You are disrupting the meeting. You are disrupting the meeting. Just stay on the item, and you're good. Okay, so, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, colleagues. I stand to ask that we move and adopt the revised CLA report dated February 28th, 2013, which was delivered to the city clerk and all city council offices yesterday. The revised report has technical changes, that's the nature of the changes. And colleagues, I do want to take a moment to let you know that this project has been one of those challenges that has taken almost eight years, for all the changes that have occurred, from the state taking away our monies through the CLA, from the fall of the economy, during the debacle of what happened to the real estate market. But I can't express to you just how hard the CLA has worked to make sure we got to this point, along with the General Services Department, the Planning Department, DOT, CDD, the CRA, who we know has faded away, or is fading away, the CAO, and Forest City, the developer, and the Housing Department. They've been tremendous. There's too many persons to recognize, but I want to thank them, because this became one of those challenges, and I strongly believe we can do this. Because if we can do LA Live in one year, we could do this. So, I want to thank them, and we're going to see a tremendous iconic structure at the Chinatown Railroad Station. It'll be the new gateway to downtown, and it'll be a tremendous asset to our economy. So, with that, I'd like to ask, we do vote on this, and once we do, we can move this forthwith.
And congratulations to you, Mr. Reyes, and congratulations to the residents of the great city of Los Angeles. Mr. Clerk.
And for clarification, that the vote will be to adopt the Housing Community Economic Development Committee Report as amended by the CLA recommendations.
Okay, no more speakers on the queue. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, next item, Mr. Clerk.
That brings us to item 11, called Special for Cards.
Item 11. Now, if someone has run out of time, you guys are going to have to alert me. So, I've got John Walsh, HollywoodHighland.org, and Antonio Ramirez, and Dahlhouse Dude is out of town. Ramirez has one minute. And if you guys listen to John, you'll know how to jump around, but stay close to the subject. Ms. Ramirez.
Did you forget you censored before the last two items?
You just have to speak on that item.
Item 11, subsection 1I. The city council members and absent two members of the L.A. City Attorney's Office, along with the LAPD Chief Charlie Beck and Rampart Police Department, have failed miserably in reducing the urban blight, which consists of criminal illegal felons and violent gangbangers. And this is concerned homeland security. Again, this has a lot to do with homeland security, because obviously, they are in collusion with the city of Los Angeles, where they have contributed to the urban blight and the criminal mayhem.
Ms. Ramirez, you have to stay on the subject. I have no problem at all in letting you or anyone speak, but there are certain rules we have to adhere to. So, if you would stay on item 11, I will continue to allow you to speak. I haven't denied you anything. You're not on the subject. Sergeant, she's just refusing, disrupting the meeting. She's not staying on the subject. We have warned you several, several times. If you just stay on the subject, then you're fine. Okay, on this item, could we please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote? Okay. Mr. Englander.
And if I could ask that that item be sent forthwith as well?
Without objection.
In light of the speaker's remarks.
Okay. All right, it's my understanding that of the comic cards, two of those individuals are out of time, but there is time remaining for Mr. John Walsh, HollywoodHighland.org, and George Azarian. Mr. Walsh?
And that is in regards to item 13.
Item 13, John. Okay, George, you can go first until John gets up here, because I don't want John running. Okay, George.
Yeah. I want to say, couple time I say, but I don't know, my English is very poor.
We understand you, George, just do the best you can.
Very good, I am happy. Right now, I no have place for give people food, clothes, furnishes, little place. I got here Beverly Hill Road and Vermont Pool Water, 101 Freeway, Hunter, got a little place. Never government can use that. No have lights, no have gas, no have water, nothing. I can use it, I put trailer, couple trailer, I can do everything. I can give food, I give again 2, 3,000 people. I hire people in the job. Already, I hiring the job 155 people. I got a website. I don't know, why councilmen no help me? I want to talk separate, Paul Gregorian, Tom LaBonge, Eric Carcity, everybody knows Please, help us. Thousand people wait every day, yes, he come my house. When you going to open up? When? I no want to stop. I give you for no close, is not close, maybe pretty soon going to close. Yeah. And then section 8, I no work for money. I no need the money, I am 91 years old, I am old. Nobody is older than me.
Thank you, thank you, George. Mr. John Walsh?
George fought in the Red Army against Hitler when he was a teenager, the Red Army.
Wow, come on, John.
Now, this is concerning homeless. Now, I just want you to realize that the story is breaking, I've heard it on the national news, because of the failure of mostly the county, not the city, but the city is implicated. We now have a new strain of tuberculosis, killer TB downtown. Now, for you people, West Side people, it's going to break, it's going to jump, and it's going to go into your neighborhoods, especially since all you white people have Mexican minority servants. This is the biggest story, and it's going to hit this city, is we're talking about killer TB unique strain. I'd just like to say, HollywoodHighlands.org, and just to finish off, people are asking about the caricature of the mayor, I mean, of the president?
Stay on the subject, John.
Okay, well, if you want to see a caricature of someone else, of Jill Stewart.
Stay on the subject.
If Jill Stewart were homeless and they did a caricature of her, it would be a big white mouth and a big white backside. L.A. Daily News, I mean, L.A. Weekly, racist. HollywoodHighlands.org, no on Prop A, a thousand times.
John, John, stay on the subject. We are, Mr. Walsh, going to do a special one, so you may want to get in line. Okay. All right, let's vote on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney or LaBonge, can we move forward with special one?
He's not going to do a special one.
Your approval, we're going to go Rule 16.
Oh, you're going to change it up?
Let's do the advice of Mr. Gregorian, not of Doc.
Okay. You're listening to the right guy. All right, what's next on our agenda?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and they are referred next.
The desk is clear.
Okay. Announcements? Can everybody please rise in the council chambers for adjourning motions? Adjourning motions, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of George Aratani. George died on February 19th at the incredible age of 95. George Tetsuo Aratani was born on May 22nd, 1917, in Gardena, as the only child to Tetsuo and Yoshiko Aratani, immigrants from Japan. He was a star athlete growing up, spent time studying in Hiroshima, Japan, then Kaya University, before returning home to attend Stanford and finally taking over his family business. However, Executive Order 1966 interred thousands of California residents of Japanese descent, including George and his stepmother. George spent time in camps in Arizona until he volunteered for the Army Intelligence and taught Japanese to U.S. soldiers. In 1944, he married Sakae Inoue, and the two moved to Hollywood, where George became an increasingly successful entrepreneur, founding the Ur Porter. an increasingly successful entrepreneur, founding the importer Mikasa and Kenwood Audio. The contribution of George and his wife Sakai to American and Japanese-American culture and society have been immense. His experiences with internment and overcoming institutional barriers helped fuel his passion to make a difference and advance the NIKE community. For decades, the Aratanis have contributed to education and cultural efforts for Japanese-Americans, including the sponsorships of foundations, cultural study centers, retirement homes, museums, and Japanese-American religious centers. In 2004, George and his wife gave $500,000 to UCLA to create the first endowed chair for research on Japanese-American internment. George Aratani's life is a testament to the strengths of the human intellect and spirit. His entrepreneurial spirit and willingness to give back to his community embody the very core of what makes this nation of immigrants great. He will be remembered and sorely missed. A memorial service will be held at 2:00 PM at the Aratani Japan American Theater at the Japanese-American Culture and Community Center, 244 South San Pedro Street in Little Tokyo. May he rest in peace. And we, as the city of Los Angeles, would like to thank him for his service to this country. Our apologies go to him and the Japanese-American community for what we did during the internment, but he contributed to our military efforts during World War II and also was a great businessman that has given back through a lot of his success. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. And Mr. Gregorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President members. It's with great sadness that I ask that we adjourn in the memory of a very talented and bright young man, Justin Carr, who left us far too early at the age of 16. Justin was a swimmer with Harvard Westlake's swim team and passed away while working out with the team. Justin appeared in some of, in many theatrical choral and dance performances at Harvard Westlake, including Grease, Fiddler on the Roof, and Oklahoma. He was also a junior leader in Harvard Westlake's Black Leadership and Culture Club. And in that role, he helped to coordinate events and speakers on campus, including bringing Samuel L. Jackson to the campus as keynote speaker during Black History Month. Justin was talented in a wide variety of endeavors. He was a dedicated swimmer and artist. He was a wonderful student ambassador for Harvard Westlake, and he was keenly interested in design, having pursued summer architecture classes already in college at Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. He cared deeply about issues of social justice, particularly intercultural awareness and sensitivity, and he was a force for tolerance, compassion, and good on the Harvard Westlake campus and in our community. Justin's talents shined very brightly in every corner of his community, and his loss will be profoundly felt by all those who knew him and all those who were impacted by his all-too-short life. He is survived by his parents, Susan and Daryl, and he will be missed by his family, his friends, and our entire community. May he rest in peace.
Mr. Parks, did you have one?
Yes, thank you very much. I would like to request the council adjourn in memory of James Kevin Murray, who was born in April 1961, passed away February 17, 2013. James was the devoted husband of Linda Murray and father of James, David, Jessica, and Jason. He was a minister at the Alondra Boulevard Church of Christ, also provided many years of service at the Figueroa Street Church of Christ congregation. James was a beloved and devoted counselor at Linwood High School and resided in the Ninth District for many years. He loved to participate in the Los Angeles Marathon. Funeral service will be held at Linwood High School in Linwood tomorrow at 10:00 AM, March 2nd. There will be a memorial service at the Church, Figueroa Street Church of Christ, 57th and Figueroa this evening at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Other adjourning motions, Mr. Kretsch.
Thank you, Mr. President. On February 10th, our city and region lost a great friend in Rudy Cole, who passed away at the age of 82. He was a treasured icon in the city of Beverly Hills, where he was very civically involved both as a community leader and a local print journalist and TV moderator. He was also an astute and fair observer and key voice on transportation and other regional issues, and deeply involving our city of Los Angeles and other adjacent cities. He was born in Fostoria, Ohio, graduated from Austin High School in Chicago, then moved to Beverly Hills in the late 1950s, where he began a career of over 50 years in journalism, most recently as a longtime columnist at the Beverly Hills Weekly. He was also the moderator and producer inside Beverly Hills. Here in Los Angeles, he helped to elect Marvin Browdy to the city council, and I believe worked on his staff right after he was first elected. He was one of those very competent and incredibly reasonable and knowledgeable people who always offered constructive solutions, even when we had a difficult issue in my district relating to the subway and whether it should go under Beverly Hills, where one newspaper publisher has been certainly raising that issue very aggressively, and yet he has taken, took a very reasonable stance on that. The one interesting thing with Rudy is we had one issue of disagreement despite being dear friends for many, many years. He was a very active smoker, and I was the one that wrote West Hollywood's legislation banning smoking in restaurants and encouraged other cities to do the same thing at the same time. And he was the tobacco company's lobbyist against all that legislation. So, we fought like cats and dogs on that issue. And that's not necessarily a bad thing. I love cats and dogs. But at the end of the day, we have been dear friends all the way through, even though it was a very emotional issue and we were on the exact opposite sides. But he was just that kind of a guy. Wonderful to everybody, whether you agreed with him or not. And he and his friends, his friends will deeply miss him in the city of Beverly Hills and elsewhere.
Yeah, he sound very special, Mr. Kretsch. Any more adjourning motions? Okay, we're going to go to announcements for, Mr. Reyes is going to do a quick announcement. Everybody here can sit down.
Thank you. Thank you so much, colleagues. Only because of our economy, we have a job fair over at Dodger Stadium from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM this Saturday. Employers will be recruiting, so we'll have onsite interviews. So, dress for success. Come on down to Dodger Stadium for interviews for jobs. The job fair is essentially open to the public. There'll be a free shuttle from Sunset Boulevard and Elysian Park to the stadium. It's free admission and free parking. You can enter through the Elysian Park Avenue Stadiumway entrance. So, the folks out there who are looking for jobs, they'll have a whole group of employers ready to interview you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Members, this meeting is adjourned. Enjoy your weekend. It should be very nice.